I have not. Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three. March 20, 2023. Test, test, one, two, three. Sioux City, City Council. Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three. March 20, 2023. Test, test, one, two, three. Sioux City, City Council. Test, test, three, one, two, three.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
I move for you to adjourn the closed session.
Second?
Shaner? Again, she's not here. Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
What? You want to do the photo before?
The dang.
Well, you.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
I move for you to adjourn the closed session.
Second?
Shaner? Again, she's not here. Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
What? You want to do the photo before?
The dang.
Well, you.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Okane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Do we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have all of our KCAU people come to the front there?
Sir.
Yeah, special day today. We have a commendation that reads, "Whereas KCAU signed on the air 70 years ago on March 29, 1953, as KVTV, the first television station in Siouxland. And whereas KCAU continues to broadcast from the first 2,000-foot tower built in Iowa when was the first Siouxland television station to broadcast in color and high definition. And whereas KCU broadcast professionals Tim Seaman, Sophie Herber, Scott Larson, and Anthony Mumenthal have continued the station commitment to provide awareness and service to the people of Northwest Iowa, Northeast Nebraska, and Southeast South Dakota. And whereas KCAU general manager John Curry and the entire staff continue KCA's tradition of proudly serving people in Sioux City," or in Siouxland, I'm sorry, "now therefore I, Robbery Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize the 70th anniversary of KCAU 9 Television in Sioux City and commend this observance to all citizens." I'd like to present this to you, say a few words if you would like, and...
Just a great honor to be here on this occasion. It's really a milestone for this television station and all the team at KCAU, but is so proud to be able to do what we do day in, day out for the folks of Siouxland. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming down.
You know, I didn't know I was the same age as at KCAU. I will be. It's amazing. 1953 was a great year.
It was a big one.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, we're interviews for the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. Sean Olerandami, I can say it, but I didn't tonight. Come on up, Sean. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve. Yes?
My name is Sean Olerandami. I'm from Sioux City. I've lived here all my life. I run in the city. I bike. My family and I walk. We like to use that as a mode of transportation, but it's not always easy for us. We like to use that as a mode of transportation, but it's not always easy for us to do that for a variety of reasons, so I would like to be part of the solution and work with other passionate people in the city who are interested in making this a city where people don't have to be car-dependent in order to get where they need to go.
Excellent remarks. Thanks for making the application, too. Really appreciate it.
Sean, what would be the first thing that you would like to see changed or improved? If you were given a project, they said choose a project.
A place that I often walk is the north side, or bike is the north side, because that's where we live. And for us, that stretch of road from Stone Park Boulevard to, what is that, Thirty-Sixth Street, a lot of times, especially in the spring and the winter, or anytime it rains, it's unpassable on the sidewalks because of all that...
Yeah. Run-off.
It comes down.
Right.
You know, we've got two young kids. They like to be on their scooters. They like to sometimes be in the stroller. For us, that is difficult.
Kind of like a mudslide into there.
Citizens, that's difficult, and we use it for recreation. If you're using that because you have no other way of commuting, I imagine that would be incredibly stressful. So I think that would be something to look at immediately. That's what comes to mind for me.
Okay, that's...I agree. I live on North Hamilton, and I see a lot of little mini mudslides that end up on that sidewalk.
And then you've got to go in the street and...
Yep, navigating with strollers, and parents walking or riding, and their kids are with them on their bikes, and it's not so easy to get the kids off of the sidewalk and onto the street and then back on to go around things, so...
Definitely makes it stressful with that high-traffic area.
It does. Well, that might be something Alex and I can look into. We're on the Public Works Team. Maybe there's something that we can do.
Well, that stretch was brought up during our Neighborhood Network meeting as well, so I'm glad to hear you say that. And it often doesn't get, in the winter, shoveled. And I don't know if that's the city's property or not, but it doesn't get shoved.
But actually, the people up above.
The people above, yeah.
Yeah, I doubt they're going to come all the way down and shovel it, but in my mind, I'm seeing one of those fabric net...
Silt fence.
Uh-huh. You know how it catches, like, when they do landscaping and things? In my mind, I'm seeing that, that might catch some of that, so I don't know. And it seems like that would be maybe an affordable, something to look at, so Alex and I'll...
It's a frustration, for sure.
Yeah, it is. Alex and I'll talk about that.
With a pretty costly, I mean, I don't know, yeah, a silt fence-type thing would work, but it is a frustrating situation on that stretch of sidewalk, for sure.
Good idea, though. Thank you.
I was really excited to see your applications come in. It makes a lot of sense. And I, actually, I just talked to your sister earlier, and she said, well, I've got some complaints to file with them one Tuesday. But your whole family is very active. Natalie, on her lunch, I see her out jogging on Outer Belt. So I mean, you have a very active family, and you get a lot of use out of them. I like that you told us what the trails were that you use often, so I appreciate that. What do you think, what do you think our deficiency is with our trails? Do you think that they are, number one, cleaned enough? And do you feel like we're making the right, the right moves to connect our trails?
I really do like our trails, and I do think they're clean enough. I rarely have a time where I'm biking on a trail or running on a trail, and it's unpassable or anything like that. I think for a lot of people, the difficulty with the trail is that you can't get to the trail if you don't have a car in a lot of, in a lot of places. And so they're nice to have if you have a car. It would be nicer if they were car-independent, and you could use them recreationally without having to first drive to them. We can, because we live right off of Hamilton, and we can get on it right there. There are a lot of places where, if you want to use the trail and you don't have a car, you don't, you don't have that option. Or it's going to be such a headache to get there in the first place that no sensible person would use that option.
Let me ask you, one other thing that comes up often is bike trails, and whether or not to have a dedicated bike trail kind of in the street, or to convert existing walks, or to have a separated lane with curb. What's your preference when it comes to that?
I mean, it's so tough, because the, again, like, let's say you want to use the bike trails, you would, the trails we, the designated trails, we have along Perry Creek, Riverside, the riverfront. Again, getting there is difficult. In a bike lane, our infrastructure has been built, and the way our city has been built for so long, it just didn't take that into consideration, that to try to MacGyver something now, I don't know that that would work, that that would be beneficial for the bikers or the drivers. And so that's, that's difficult to deal with that, I think, in isolation. I like to ride in the street, but at the same time, one, I understand that that's an inconvenience for drivers, but if I try to ride elsewhere, I run the risk of getting hurt. I broke my arm a few years ago, riding on the sidewalks. Compound fracture. So it's difficult to say, oh, I would rather ride in the street, because a lot of times it's not safe. But at the same time, the most unsafe I've been has been on a, on a city sidewalk, so...
Any question? Moore? Thank you. We appreciate you applying.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Environmental Advisory Board, Anna Sanchez. Come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Hi, nice to meet you guys. I'm Donna Sanchez. I'm a Spanish teacher in South Sioux High School. I've always been very passionate about the environment. I think climate change is one of the biggest issues that's facing this generation, and now that I'm out of college, I'd like to get a little bit more hands-on now that I have the time.
Excellent.
Appreciate your passion and application very much.
Thank you.
I was curious about your thoughts about, so last year, we started the Twenty-Two on Twenty-Two, so on the twenty-second day of the month, we encourage people to try and pick up twenty-two pieces of trash. And it's been pretty successful. We've had some groups that have really kind of carried the torch with that. I was curious about whether, what other efforts you could see us moving in.
Well, I think a lot of the times when we're enjoying our parks, like Stone Park or Bacon Creek, we'll be walking, and we'll see maybe like a plastic water bottle, or even maybe a diaper. I think if we had proper recycling bins for those sort of things, we could clean up our natural areas. And also, I think it's important to just get the information out to people about recycling and get that information out in different languages, because if we're honest, UCD is a very diverse community, and if the more languages that we address, the better people are informed about recycling and all the efforts that the city has made.
Very true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the consent agenda, which today is Items Three through Sixteen-E. Consider them to pass unanimously. You can come up on an item if you want to speak on it as I read that item. If you want to come up on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Remember, I'll always state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second, reading of the City Council minutes of March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Four is a resolution adding a daily fare, daily pass fare rate to the transit system fare structure for fixed route service. Five is a resolution endorsing the reallocation of Clean Water State revolving funds from the Perry Creek watershed project to the Plaski Park project. Six is a resolution adopting a capital improvement program guidelines policy and rescinding conflict and resolutions.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Teresa and Sarah, if I may. Thank you for your work on the capital improvement program policy guidelines. I appreciate combining a couple of ancient ordinances with one that...
Teresa Fitz, Finance Director, yes, we're looking at all of our policies, so you'll see a lot of them coming back and adjustments to them as we make, you know, make them more current.
I just have about three questions that, if I could, if I may ask, in Section Eight, where it talks about budgeted capital improvement projects, is the intent of that first sentence, we can have projects still brought to the council, even if they're not programmed in the CIP, but is it, but it's just for the, during the fiscal year itself, isn't it? In other words, so when we have our budget hearings and you're presenting...
Yes.
A new budget or an updated budget will have, will have projects that weren't in before?
Absolutely, yep. They just have to come to council.
And I just want to clarify that, though, if you could find some way. I just thought maybe just add during the fiscal year.
I think the next sentence does say that.
Well, that's...
That's it?
Yeah, Sarah Swerengen, Budget Manager. The second sentence does say with the exception of, and then ends with during the fiscal year.
But just as to those projects, but maybe that covers everything that would come before council, then?
It should, yes.
Okay. My second question on sales tax in Section Twelve, the allocated, the allocation for the percentages?
Yes.
Is that the same as what we've had for several years?
Yep, we have, that's an ordinance.
Appreciate that. And then in Section Fifteen, the CIP review, it provides any project not spent after two years will become unprogrammed. Does that affect our carryover balances?
Well, if we know they have a project in place, this is for, more for bonding arbitrage. It has to be sent, spent in a period of time. So if we know that they have a project, a lot of times, and it's a like project, we'll have moved it to a different project, so we try not to have monies unspent. But if it is not moved to a like project, and council isn't aware of it, it has to go back. We have to pay it back.
I see. Okay.
So that's why that's, that is in here.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the information.
Resolution, or Seven's Resolution setting a public hearing, hearing for the Consortium Year Four Action Plan. Eight is a resolution awarding a grant and approving service contract with Downtown Partners for lighting improvements on Fourth Street from Iowa to Water. Nine is a resolution...
I just had to, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Jill Wondershied, Planning Neighborhood Services, I just needed to mention that the number is incorrect in the original RCA under financial impact. The correct project number is six-six-three-two-two-two. All the other financial information remains...
Do we need to amend that?
Don't click in the RCA. It is not confirmed.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nine is a resolution approving an updated job description of the position of the pre-treatment coordinator. Ten is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Converge One for extreme network switches and five years' worth of maintenance. Eleven are actions relating to civil penalties and suspensions. A is a resolution setting a hearing on a proposed civil penalty of three hundred dollars against Casey's fourteen-nineteen Hamilton for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. B is a resolution setting a hearing on proposed civil penalty of three hundred dollars against Chasing Clouds thirty-two-oh-eight Singing Hills Boulevard for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. Eleven, C through eleven G are resolutions assessing five hundred dollars each for violations of the Iowa liquor laws against C Plaza Bowl thirty-ninety-one Hamilton Boulevard, D Bob Rose North Endzone forty-one-hundred Floyd Boulevard, E The Half Moon Bar and Grill seven-fourteen South Lewis Boulevard, F Sam's Mini Mart nine-twenty-three West Seventh Street, G The Courtyard by Marriott Hotel and Conference Center nine-oh-one Fourth Street. H is a resolution assessing a fifteen-hundred-dollar penalty and a thirty-day suspension against Evero's Aguayo, ten-oh-one Court Street for violation of the Iowa liquor laws. Twelve are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Martin Luther King Parking Ramp Repair Project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Headington Park Splash Pad Project. C is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the two thousand twenty utility lining project. Thirteen are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution authorizing a federal aid agreement for surface transportation block ramp program project with IDOT for the Hamilton Boulevard HMA Mill and Overlay Project, Thirty-Sixth Street to Ham, to the city limits. B is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Black and Beach for the South Bridge Water Plant with High Service Pump AFD Project. C is a resolution approving a settlement agreement and release regarding claims against Mission Clay Products. Fourteen are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution approving settlement payment of a tort claim. B is a motion approving the expenses for February twenty-twenty-three. C is a resolution approving fund transfers for February twenty-twenty-three. Fifteen are applications for beer and liquor license. And sixteen, boards commissioning committee minutes. That concludes the consent agenda. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five-zero-seventeen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the construction of the two thousand twenty-three annual sidewalk ramp project. I'll move that.
Second?
The hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five-zero-eighteen is a resolution adopting an inclusive language notice deferred from March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'll move that.
Second? Want to thank staff for making the revisions to be requested a week ago. I think this really, really says what we want it to say. It's a very, it's a positive step in Sioux City to have the inclusive language notice, and so I just wanted to thank the staff for their hard work on, our thank you to your staff. Yeah, you're welcome.
And your committee as well. It sounds like they went through a lot to produce this, so...
Right.
Make sure to pass along the appreciation.
I'm Hark Everkeaton, City Manager's Office. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sorry, I just didn't know if there was questions instead of me just whispering over there.
No, I think it...
I'm good.
Run a note here in a minute. Didn't come up. I just... Well, it went...
There.
Minute there. Passes five-zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Citizen concerns, are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none? Matthew?
Well, Friday, I went to the Regbri logo, lovely new logo for Regbri. It's referencing back to when Regbri started here fifty years ago, so it was, it was neat to be a part of that. The logo was designed by Jeff Gordon, and it's, it's kind of a flashback to the time.
Did a nice job.
Right? Just like you're there yesterday, right? Thought it, it was, it was nice. There's already requests for T-shirts. There was a big turnout at the Art Center. It was fun to see so many bicycles in the Art Center. No art got knocked over, so it was, it was fun to be a part of. April twenty-first, this is down the road a little bit, but is litter dash. I wanted to bring that up on my way to North Middle School this morning. I saw somebody out for a morning jog down Stone Park, and they were just turning kind of off of Hamilton onto Stone Park, and they picked up some trash that was on the street on their jog. And I was, if I wasn't running late, I would have probably stopped and told them thank you, but it's nice, a nice reminder that if you're out taking a walk, or taking a jog, or just spending time outdoors, taking a second just to help clean up after, after that last thaw, we've got plenty of trash out there, so it's going to take a community effort. And that's everything for today.
Truly.
Well, I'd like to give a shout-out to those who put together the St. Patrick's Parade on Friday. This year, I wasn't in it because I don't own a business anymore, but I want to thank Mac Dolan and Kelly Quinn. They're the founders of the parade. They've been able to start something small, where I think it went about a half a block the first year, and they're running it all the way from Iowa Street over to Water Street now. So Mac Dolan, Kelly Quinn, their families, I mean, it takes a lot to put something like this together. Their sponsors, their volunteers, everything was left in good condition after they were finished. They had nine-degree weather, and they stuck it out. They didn't cancel it, which was great. You know, and when we have events like this, parades, and festivals, and meals, and Saturday in the parks, and things like that, it truly does bring this community together. And whether you're friends, relatives, it brings strangers together with your friends, with your relatives. I know I was downtown, and I spoke to a couple of people who I'd never met before, and I enjoyed it, and so did they. So I hope that we continue on this path and that everybody appreciates that. And it does bring revenue to the city, to all the local restaurants and gas stations, things like that. So it's not just about downtown, but I truly do appreciate all the work that goes into this, and a big thanks for that St. Patrick's Parade.
Alex?
I just wanted to thank some people as well. NAIA wrapped up in Sioux City, and so I wanted to thank especially Corey Westra... NAIA wrapped up in Sioux City, and so I wanted to thank especially Corey Westra and Mike Skaggs for all of their work and kind of shepherding that in our community and being a part of it for, I mean, decades now. I think that it's really a testament to their dedication, but also I wanted to thank all of the city staff, their time and efforts that went into pulling something like that off in our community, I think is, is, yeah, just a testament to, to the hard work and, and what our team is able to accomplish, I think. And so thank you all, if you had a hand in that. I know that the leak apparently made a lot of headlines, and so that was, while that was frustrating, I want to appreciate our city manager for sure for keeping the council informed about what was going on, but also then coordinating and working with staff who worked diligently to do their best to make sure that those games got back underway as fast as possible and as safely as possible. So I truly appreciate those efforts. And then lastly, that I wanted to thank was Bill Lane down at the Expo Center in parts of Parks and Recreation. Morningside hosted a esports tournament there in the Expo, what, last weekend or something like that? And so, yeah, it was really nice, and I think that there's, there's a future in some of that. You're seeing a lot more colleges, high schools start to offer esports, and so the willingness for staff to kind of navigate that and support an effort like that was pretty cool. There were colleges represented all over the region.
It was covered by the media partially.
Yeah. So it was, it was really an impressive thing to have in our community, I think, that it paved the way for hopefully more of those events in the future. So I appreciate Bill especially for being there, but also Matt and John that had efforts in getting it set up, so. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
More?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I would like to take a moment. This community has lost a giant of a person last week, a week ago tomorrow. Marvin Berenstein passed away a week ago tomorrow. Marvin oftentimes said this community has been very good to his family, and he always believed that they needed to give back. And give back Marvin Berenstein did. From, from when Governor Branstad appointed him to the State Board of Regents, and he served as president of that board, the Board of Regents, as you all know, oversee the universities in the state of Iowa, which affects, those students do affect the community of Sioux City. We have students that go to the universities here in Iowa, and he, he just did a great job on that board. He was, served as president of the Iowa State Bar Association and did a great job for Iowa lawyers, and you'll recall United Flight 232. He was very instrumental as, as an Iowa lawyer to make sure that everything, at least legally, was handled properly by lawyers that came into the state and lawyers that were within the state. He was appointed by Governor Vilsack to the Vision Iowa Board, and the Vision Iowa Board, and he served as president of that for some time. And the Vision Iowa Board and Marvin Berenstein, they were very instrumental in, in having and establishing the Tyson Events Center. And without Vision Iowa and without Marvin Berenstein, I just don't think the Tyson Events Center would have happened. And so, and we all got to enjoy that last week with the NAIA tournament that goes on. It's just, it's a spectacular place. The other thing that Marvin Berenstein has done for this community is in late 1990s, he was one of the founders of Siouxland Initiative, and Siouxland Initiative just does a lot of great things for this community and Northwest Iowa and, and the entire region. He was also, the other thing that Marvin did that was very near and dear to his heart is he worked through the Community Action Agency to help establish Welcome Home. Welcome Home is a facility, a place where homeless families can find a temporary home while they're looking for something more permanent. And that Welcome Home program has just been spectacular. It's been very, very successful. Marvin will be missed. He leaves a legacy to many. He's touched many lives of Sioux Cityans as well as Siouxland, the Siouxland region and across the state of Iowa and even beyond that. So thank you, Mayor, for giving me an opportunity to remember Marvin Berenstein, man of high integrity, high ethics, and a very professional lawyer over the decades that he was in Sioux City. And just a couple of other things, if I may. Thank you. I just want to briefly say, and I don't know who's, who is in charge of the HomeServe program we have for the insurance, the plumbing, or the water lines and the sewer lines, but I'm just wondering what our record is with Sioux Cityans for those that have HomeServe, what claims have been made, that kind of thing, if we could get a report on it. We don't have to have it today, but if I could just get a report on that, I'd just like to see if Home Serve is as successful as we were hoping it would be.
We can provide a council memo.
Is the insurance program?
Mm-hmm. From the street to your house.
Thank you, yes.
We're just waiting for the information. We...
Okay. Okay, thank you. Nope, that's great. And then I was trying to get the information, because I want to be accurate on this, but I believe it's this Friday, the 24th, that Women Aware are having their banquet. I wish I, did you think that's, does that sound right? It's this Friday. I should know because I'm going, but it's, but it's, okay, this Friday, the 24th. So Women Aware will be having their banquet where they honor women that have been extremely successful.
Friday at 5:00.
Friday at 5:00. Thank you, Julie. And so I hope that's well attended. It's a very important event, and Women Aware, for years, they've served a great purpose in this community. Thank you.
We actually, we actually have a member of our staff that was nominated, so Sam Har is up for that as well. So congratulations on the nomination, Sam.
Move, we adjourn. Second?
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.